Brooke, can you hear me?
I can hear you loud and clear.
You're looking very formal tonight.
Really large on that screen. That's how I like to be.
All right, we're soon ready.
Okay.
Brooke, do you want me to open the meeting and turn it over to you at item four? Or are you going to open the meeting altogether?
Nope, I'll open the meeting and get us through the first few items and then get it to that temporary president and get everybody sworn in and then they can take it away.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, sure. Okay, I'm showing 5:30. Are we good to start?
Yep, we can start.
Okay, great.
Actually, just give us, give us 30 seconds while Director Kreiser takes her seat. Okay, Brooke, we can, we can get started. Thank you.
Awesome. I'm going to gavel this meeting into session. Today is Tuesday, December 2nd, 2025. You're attending the Northern Lebanon School District Reorganization Meeting as well as regular meeting. And I officially call this meeting to order. If you could stand with me for our flag salute and moment of silence, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You can be seated. If I could have Madam Secretary call the roll, this roll call will only be of the holdover members. That means members that are not newly or re-elected.
Director Blau. Director England. Direct-
So it's, it's just for the holdovers? So it would just be- Right, so yeah.
Only the people that were not in the last election.
Here, I'll, I'll hold on just a second. So it would be Director, Director Fowler, Director Kreiser, Director Moyer, Director Nam, Director Williams.
Are those persons all present?
Yes.
Yes.
Fantastic. Then we have a quorum to begin our reorganization meeting. And we will turn to the public to see if there's any public comment on the reorganization process. Do we have any public comment tonight?
No.
Excellent. Okay. Our next step is to read the list of legally elected or appointed and qualified school directors. Madam Secretary, if you could just read that list in front of you and then we will proceed to the temporary president election and we will get those new individuals and those re-elected individuals sworn in.
Rob Fowler, Shen Kreiser, Benjamin Moyer, Barry Nam, Troy Williams, Martha Blau, Robert England, David Klein, Stacy Murray.
Thank you. Those individuals listed on the agenda, the last four are those that were re-elected this year and have a term that runs until 2029. The other previously elected directors have terms that expire in 2027. At this point in the meeting, we move to what's called election of a temporary president. This is the individual that is from one of the holdover members, one of those five that we talked about that, that have terms that expire in 2027. One of those individuals, we need to have serve as our temporary president. Only those holdover members can elect that temporary president. So at this time, I would like to open the floor for nominations for the position of temporary president.
I would like to nominate Director Williams as the temporary president.
Fantastic. Is there a second for that nomination?
A second.
Great. Are there any additional nominees for the position, the very short-term position of temporary president? Okay, hearing none, may I have a motion to close nominations?
Motion to close?
And a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor of closing nominations, please say aye.
Aye.
Great. And now we have a motion and a second for Director Williams to serve as the temporary president. Is there any discussion on that before we approve him? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. Director Williams, you can take the gavel, please. And at this time, under the public school code, you have been duly authorized to provide the oath of office for all those directors that have terms that expire in 2029. So those are all re-elected incumbent directors, Ms. Blau, Mr. England, Mr. Klein, and Ms. Murray. Do you have that oath of office in front of you?
Brooke, we're looking at your script.
It's probably in there a little ways. And I can give you the language to repeat, Director Williams, and then you can have all officers, all individuals who are taking the oath raise their right hand.
Yeah, I think you should, you're going to have to do that. I don't see it on the-
Okay, so I'm going to say the words, then Director Williams is going to repeat them, and then the individuals that are taking the oaths are going to repeat it a third time. Because under the school code, only the temporary president or a notary can give the oath. I am not an authorized notary. So Director Williams, please charge our individuals to say aye and then state their name.
Brooke, I believe I have the, the oath here.
Fantastic. So you can read that in chunks, have individuals repeat after you, and raise their right hand.
So if the newly elected board members could raise their right hands, please. Martha Blau, Robert England, David Klein, Stacy Murray. Repeat after me. I do solemnly swear-
I do solemnly swear-
That I will support-
That I will support-
Obey and defend-
Obey and defend-
The Constitution of the United States-
The Constitution of the United States-
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge the duties-
And I will discharge the duties-
Of my office with fidelity.
My office with fidelity.
Thank you.
Perfect. And now, Madam Secretary, if you could call the roll of the full board as duly constituted.
Director Blau. Director England. Director Fowler.
Present.
Director Klein.
Present.
Director Kreiser.
Present.
Director Moyer.
Here.
Director Murray.
Here.
Director Nam.
Present.
Director Williams.
Present.
All present.
Excellent. Mr. Temporary President, you can proceed for election of permitted officers.
So I will now open the floor for nominations for Board President for 2026.
Two folks did nominate an individual for president, but it's my understanding, Brooke, correct me if I'm wrong, they have to actually, while we have a feel for who is not, who is going to be nominated, they actually have to nominate at this time.
Yes, there is no such thing as a sacred ballot in the nominations process for officers. So we would need individuals to verbalize that nomination and get a second to get it on the floor.
Okay.
I would nominate Barry Nam. Second.
Okay. Thank you. So we have a nomination and a second for Barry Nam. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to close the nominations for Board President.
Motion to close nominations for Board President.
Thank you, Director Klein. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Director Murray. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, well, as only one person was nominated, we will vote by voice vote, or we can do a roll vote. Probably just do a roll call. If the result of voting by voice is unclear, a roll call vote may be used. All those in favor of Barry Nam as Board President indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? My vote is also a yes. Barry Nam, congratulations. You are elected as Board President.
And you can return the gavel to President Nam. Thank you so much for your service.
Great, thank you.
There you go.
Thank you, Director Williams. Appreciate that. And thank you, everyone. Really appreciate the confidence and I'm looking forward to another year. We've done some great things and I'm really looking forward to this, this upcoming school year, so. With that said, now I will open nominations for the Office of Vice President.
Director Williams.
Okay, we have a nomination for Director Williams. Is there a second?
Second.
Great. Thank you, Director Klein. That's a nomination and a second. Is there any, any other nominations for Vice President? Okay, hearing none, I will receive a motion to close the nominations for the Office of Vice President.
Motion to close.
Having a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Okay, with, with that, as only one person has been nominated, we will vote by voice vote. If the result of the voting by voice vote is unclear, a roll call vote may be used. All those in favor of electing Director Williams to serve as Vice President for this year, please indicate with an aye or yes.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, hearing none, my vote is also a yes, so that carries unanimously. Congratulations, Director Williams. You are, again, the Vice President of the School Board. Very much appreciated. Okay, thank you, solicitor. We do appreciate your assistance for that. We do have on item seven, board meetings for 2026. Any, anything of note, Dr. Messinger?
No, it's the same schedule as we had this year. The only thing I wish I would have done in retrospect with the snow that happened today was maybe put a, if needed, reorganization meeting at the second week of December, just in case. But it turned out okay and everybody got here, so I think we're okay.
Okay. Okay, then, with that, are there any questions regarding the proposed schedule for board meetings for 2025, 2026 year? Okay, if not, is there a motion to approve the board meeting calendar?
Motion to approve board meeting calendar.
Okay, thank you. Director Murray, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Director Blau. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of approving the board meeting calendar, please indicate with an aye or yes.
Aye.
Right. Any opposed? Okay, hearing none, my vote is also yes, so that motion carries unanimously. We'll move now to the designation of the newspaper of record for the board, for the district. Anything, Dr. Messinger?
Mine's, once again, Lebanon Daily News, and we really don't have a-
Don't have an option.
An option.
Right, okay. Is there a motion to approve Lebanon Daily News as the newspaper of general circulation?
Motion to approve newspaper, Lebanon Daily or newspaper.
Okay, thank you, Director Blau. Is there a second? Okay, thank you, Director England. Is there any discussion regarding item eight? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of approving Lebanon Daily News as the newspaper of general circulation, please indicate with an aye or yes.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Okay, hearing none, my vote is also yes, so motion carries unanimously. Is there any old business to bring to the board? Okay, hearing none, we will move then to the appointment of representatives. And that includes the Lebanon County TCC, the committee chairpersons, Lebanon County CTC Joint Committee, Change Order Committee, alternates, Lebanon County Area Vocational Technical School Authority. And those are all of those. My recommendation would be to continue those officers that have served in those positions, unless there is somebody else that would like to step down or if somebody else would like to step into one of those positions. Any thoughts from the board on those? Okay, hearing none, then, what I will do is I will continue all of the prior appointments from last, from last year. And so that would be for Lebanon County TCC Executive Committee. That would be Leanne Martin, serving on the committee with Linda Kubica as alternate. Committee Chairperson's Legislative Representative is currently Director Kreiser, and Director Kreiser will continue in that role. PSBA Liaison, Director Blau, also continue the CTC Joint Committee. We have Director Klein serving as member with Director Moyer serving as alternate member. Change Order Committee will continue with, with Director Fowler as the Change Order Committee Chair. And you should have very little to do with Director Kreiser. Director Williams continuing to serve on that committee as well. And then, as far as alternates go, Leanne Martin will serve as alternate School Board Secretary, and we will appoint Anne Hartman as alternate School Board Secretary for- I'm sorry, treasurer. I apologize, yes. And then Lebanon County Area Vocational Technical School Authority, Leanne Martin, currently serving to November 2028. That does not require a reappointment. Just as a point of order, Mrs. Say, does any of that require a vote? Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Brooke, are you there? See you going.
Okay, well, with that said, then-
It does, it does require a vote for some of those technical ones. I'm sorry, I was-
Okay.
In the elevator.
No, thank you. Okay, that's what I thought. Okay. So with that said, we have 10.1 with the noted primary and alternates. Is there a motion to approve item 10.1? Okay, thank you, Director England. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Director Kreiser. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of approving those appointed representatives, as indicated in item 10.1, please indicate with an aye or yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Okay, hearing none, my vote is also a yes, so that motion carries unanimously. I just want to thank everybody for your continued willingness to serve in those roles. I think you've done an outstanding job over the last year and looking forward to even greater things. Okay, information items before we adjourn this reorganization meeting.
Just two other positions that have terms that do not expire right now. I am on the Lancaster-Lebanon Joint Authority, and my term expires in 2027, January 1st. And Director Murray is at the end of this school year as IU 13. So we'll have to talk about those at the appropriate time.
Great. Okay, thank you. Good meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn this reorganization? Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Director Blau. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of adjourning this reorganization meeting, please indicate with an aye or yes.
Aye.
Yes.
Any opposed? Okay, hearing none, this meeting is adjourned. And under the notice given to the public, we will immediately move to the regular meeting of this, of the School District Board of Directors. Great, okay. Anybody need a break or anything before we move, move on? Okay. All right, it is 5:47 on December 2nd. This is the time that we have scheduled to conduct the December regular meeting of the Northern Lebanon School District Board of Directors. The board just met in reorganization and elected officers and appointed other necessary things to conduct business for the upcoming school year. I do call this meeting to order. Mrs. Hartman, may I please have a roll call for this board meeting?
Director Blau.
Here.
Director England. Director Fowler.
Present.
Director Klein.
Present.
Director Kreiser.
Present.
Director Moyer.
Here.
Director Murray.
Here.
Vice President Williams.
Here.
President Nam.
Present.
All present.
Great, thank you. All right, first item is, of course, the adoption of this evening's agenda. The agenda was published prior to this meeting. We did have one adjustment, and that is that we are tabling, oh, yeah. It's our, it's already removed. Okay, never mind, never mind. It is, we will move forward with the agenda as it is presented and published. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda for this evening?
Motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
Thank you, Director Murray. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Director Blau. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, indicate with an aye or yes, please.
Yes.
Any opposed? Okay, my vote's also a yes, so that motion carries unanimously. The agenda is adopted for this evening. We'll move to the presentations.
Doesn't look like Nathan is with us tonight, so it's just students of the month.
Okay. High school students of the month for December are Jace Felon and Mary Beth Niedig. This award is sponsored jointly by the Fredericksburg and Jonestown Lions Clubs. And the middle school student of the month for December is Luke Copenhagen. This award is sponsored by the Northern Lebanon County Rotary Club and will be recognized at a future meeting of the Rotary Club. I don't believe any of those students are here. Okay, with that, then, we'll move to the superintendent's report. Dr. Messinger.
Okay, this is, this is the time of year where it is actually slow for us and yet feels incredibly busy all at the same time. From a, an instructional standpoint, I'm not going to tell you that the weeks between Thanksgiving and Christmas are the most beneficial three weeks that we ever have in terms of instruction. Although we are doing some good things. We have, tomorrow, third grade teachers are getting together to write curriculum. We're utilizing AI to help us with that and are excited about that. Melissa McInerney has been doing a tremendous job of putting that together. She's going to teach them how to use that. We believe that'll be a time saver for them and also help us connect dots between curriculum and our lesson planning. And the final product that she's been able to get with the use of AI is pretty impressive and we'll demonstrate that at a later meeting. Having said that, also want to draw your attention, Mrs. Hartman, who is responsible for the flowers and the, and the gifts that are in front of you, please take those home. But she did a little shopping and that's the result of that. And while I say it's busy, it's busy because we have concerts, we have winter sports. But try to get to, if you can, there's elementary concerts, high school concert. If you get a chance, try to get to one of those. We have Senior Citizens launching next Wednesday. I know we had a couple of people that showed up. Sorry, breakfast, yes, thank you. A couple of people that showed up last year, always a big hit. So if you get a chance, stop out at one of those events. And before you know it, we will be on Christmas break. That's the end of my report.
Great, thank you. Any questions? Mrs. Hartman, thank you for the gifts. Really appreciate it.
Can I get a construction report? Or is that, is that on?
Oh, yeah.
Thanks. And did you have anything?
No, I'm going to cut in front of the construction report. The only thing I wanted to draw everyone's attention to, I know we discussed it last time, was that we were getting a budget from the state. We did, and I know if you watched the address from the state up there, they did say that, you know, they gave out a lot of money to the school districts, which they did increase their funding. They are basically said that the school district, our school district, will be getting an additional million dollars and basic at funding for this current year. But I do want to draw your attention that when they calculated those numbers, one of the items that they used was a savings that they're predicting we will have in charter school costs. So of that million dollars, 386,000 of that is the savings that they anticipate us having in charter school costs due to their reform. And they did remove $197,000 that they gave us last year to offset it. So I just wanted to let everybody know that, that while it's nice to hear that number, it's also, you know, there's always a little behind the scenes in calculating and understanding fully what you're hearing. So that is the only thing I have to add.
Thanks.
Dr. East.
Not much has changed since last month in the, in the fact, in the area of the building that's impacted. We got moved into the teens hall and we got moved down to the old district area, as I, as I mentioned last month. Probably the thing that's worth noting is that we're chasing ghosts, chasing mice, well, maybe not mice, but chasing issues, bugs, in the heating system currently. And what that involves is that, well, there's four boilers in the high school, four brand, brand-new boilers. And there seems to be a lot of finger pointing going on between whether it's a boiler issue, a gas supply issue, which would then be the regulator. And of course, this can't just be one prime contractor that's responsible, it's under two prime contractors. And so there was a lengthy meeting today with the engineers, the, all of the people that needed to be in the room were, were in the room. And there's a plan of attack to try to get to the bottom of this. If you'll recall, we went through a similar experience, though different brand of boiler, If you'll recall, we went through a similar experience, though different brand of boiler, when this building came online as well. And it took us a few weeks before all, everything was in a proper place. What I learned today is that the engineers believe much of the current issues with the new boilers actually has to do with some of the EPA regulations that came out that make their, the flue gases are under tighter regulation, and so the boilers shut down more quickly when there's a difference in gas pressure. And so what has happened is we lose a boiler on Saturday or Sunday afternoon, and we come in Monday morning, and the building is down to 57 degrees, and we have to heat it up. Now, our maintenance crew comes in around, first guys here normally around 5 o'clock, gets them going, and by 7:30, we're in the mid-60s in most places. That's one, one area, and then we have some other issues with some of the rooftop units, just like you buy something new off the shelf, it doesn't always come through working the way you expect it to. And some things have come through. For example, the stage currently is not heating, and that's due to, it's a, it's a wheel, it's called an efficiency wheel, that exchanges air with the outside, so you get fresh air, but it tempers it, and that unit is not working correctly at the moment. And so the stage is cool. Now, of all places, the auditor, or the stage is a place that people generally like to be cool when they're onstage performing, they'd rather it be cool than hot. Another area what, that I believe many people are familiar with is the mat room, also experienced some downtime with its heat, although that's currently up and operational as far as heating goes, but there's still an issue with the controls of that unit that they're still working to troubleshoot. So that's a longer explanation than I normally give, but I think that really summarizes where, where we are.
You got a question about the, we talked about two different contractors for the boilers. Is Fidavia still working through these issues for us?
Absolutely, absolutely, yes. Our onsite Fidavia representative actually restarts the boiler sometimes for us, in addition to doing the background work that needs to be done to try to establish. He's been in contact with the, we have the same startup and service company, so startup is a responsibility of the mechanical contractor, but service, depending on where it is, is a responsibility of the plumbing contractor. Well, he's been working with the service company, which happens to be the same company for both of those contractors. So, you know, if we were to draw a chart of who's who and what's what, they, they cross at certain points, and that's one of the points where they cross.
And I'll just reference too, we had a pipe leak on Saturday, and the Fidavia representative was the one that came over to get it shut off for us and to take care of that, too. So we're keeping him busy right now, but, like you said, same kinds of problems here, and still occasionally here.
And I should also mention that we, we are still in process of remedying the claims that came out of the massive hot water leak that occurred back in, LeAnn, what month was that? March. And so Fidavia has been working through that for us as well. Not necessarily a quick process like we'd like, but things take time to, to work through.
Sorry, one last question.
Sure.
As we wrap this up, how long is Fidavia a resource for us?
So in the elementary wrap-up, they have, I'm not going to get the number of days correct, I think it's 100 days actually in the contract, but what we found here is they were onsite till we, till we both kind of agreed that it wasn't, wasn't worthwhile. You get to this point where, yes, there's still punch list work to be done, but it's so minimal of an impact that them being here on a daily basis isn't, is not a benefit to us nor a benefit to them. And so there, we worked out a mutual date that enough, we were far enough along that there wasn't a benefit to having an onsite person.
Just have two questions, if I can. The, I'm assuming it's the weight room. Does that have proper ventilation? Because when I walked, when I walked by there, it was moist, humidity, the moisture, it was very hot air into that, in that room. Does it have a proper ventilation to get all that humidity out? Or is it?
To the best of my knowledge, but I, I can have that researched.
Yeah, check, yeah, check that. And then the second, the second one is, I noticed there was a couple ceiling panels that have wet spots on them. Is that because of the main leak, or is it roof leaking? And can that be replaced? In addition to a couple areas on the top of the, outside of school building with the flue fascia, there's some areas that are dent messed up.
Right, afflating that.
There's, there's one there, and it's maybe out in front, I think, too, that I saw that.
As for the ceiling tile, it could be any number of issues. So if you'll recall, before we started the project, we had the roof checked. This, this is actually one of the things that allowed us to be able to do the renovation project, is that we did not have to do a roof. When they did the roof work back in 2003, they put on what they're telling me is a, like a 50-year roof, and it's, it's a buildup, it's a very expensive type of roof. But what happened is when they started pulling ceilings down, some of these minor leaks that have been existing or have created, been created over, over time, or just by adjustment of the pipe, where these rain leaders come through the ceiling. See, unlike your house, where your rainwater stays on the outside, commercial buildings with these pitched roofs actually drain the water to the inside, so the rainwater comes down through these rain leaders and then goes out through the, through the stormwater system. What we've found is some of those boots, where they come through, have been leaking. Some of them are joints. Some of them are where the HVAC curbing was cut in. For example, the auditorium lobby took a, took a substantial hit. They cut in on one day, the lift for the unit was the following day, and overnight, we had heavy rains, and we got water in, in through there in a place where tile was already installed. So without knowing specifically what area and what's going on there, I can't answer as to whether it's HVAC plumbing or rain leader type of, type of leak. It could also be condensation if the humidity is high enough and the pipes, the cooling, the cooling duct isn't insulated enough as of yet.
But ultimately, we were replacing.
Yes, yes, I'm sorry, yes.
What area was it?
It was mostly, it was mostly in the, the new area, from the auditorium down to the, the new gym.
Okay, that main hallway there.
The ceilings, it was a couple main halls, it was the old main hallway and then the new main hallway of the new addition. Back, back by the, I guess it would be the, is it banner music room in that section, there was some there. There were some at the, well, the majority of that section was back there, that music room, that hallway there. And there's a couple along the original hallway from the, the old high school gym up to the auditorium.
Okay.
I think there might be one or two on the new side.
But they were all in the core?
Yeah, yeah, pretty much. But definitely check over with that ventilation of that humidity, because they had a lot of kids in there working out, and whoo, the heat just flew out as I walked by, the moisture.
Okay.
Just for the, for safety, for, for the breathing, and, thank you.
Okay, great, any other questions? All right, thank you. Good reports. We'll move now to Public Input Session. Public was notified of their right to speak publicly today and was asked to give Secretary Notice by 3 o'clock this afternoon. We did not receive any notice of public comments, so we will move on to items for board action. It should be noted that public notice was given for this meeting in accordance with Act 84 of 1986. Following action requires a voice vote. All votes in favor shall be stayed with an "I" or "yes." All votes opposed shall be stayed with a "nay" or "no." All members abstaining shall state "I abstain when prompted." The votes will be recorded in the minutes as unanimous roll call vote, unless there are any votes in opposition or abstention. If necessary, the president may subsequently call for a roll call vote to be recorded in the minutes. First item that we have is approval of the board minutes from November 3rd and November 11th. I assume everyone's had a chance to review those. Is there a motion to approve item 6.2?
Motion to approve item 6.2 approval minutes.
Thank you, Director Blau, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Director Kreiser, any discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of approving item 6.2, please indicate with an "I" or "yes."
Yes.
Any opposed? Okay, hearing none, my vote's also "yes." Motion carries unanimously. And then we'll move to item 7, Budget and Finance. We have a few important items here.
Yeah, I'll do 7.1 and 7.2 together. Those are our monthly student activity account, sorry, cash disbursements and student activity account that we have for you every month. Just do those two for now.
Okay. Any questions on item 7.1 or 7.2? Okay, hearing none. Motion to approve item 7.1 or 7.2?
Motion to approve 7.1 and 7.2.
Thank you, Director Murray, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Director England, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of approving items 7.1 and 7.2, please indicate with an "I" or "yes."
Yes.
Any opposed? Okay, hearing none, my vote is also "yes," so items 7.1 and 7.2, those carry unanimously. All right, Dr. Messinger.
Okay, 7.3 and 7.4, we can vote separately, but they kind of go together. And that's the $6 million that Ms. Martin is anticipating to wrap up construction things. And that includes also things like the sidewalk connection that we have to do between up here in Fredericksburg and then some other sidewalk that's over here on this side, as well as final payments to contractors and some other things that along the way that we've, she, she went through that, that we still have to, to purchase, some, some of the soft cost stuff. Our recommendation is to split the difference between the $6 million and do $3 million in loan and $3 million in transfer. Our, I'll say, I think our main rationale behind that, and you say, why wouldn't you do all of it in transfer? Well, we are a little concerned, to be, to be honest, about fund balance. We've shown you numbers with 10-year projections before and how those can dip quickly. We believe strongly, and the index went down this year, we believe strongly the index will go down again. But the other thing that's lingering out there that's going to drastically impact us if we, if we vote to go ahead with it, is that, is the potential renovation from the CTC standpoint, up to, up to $1.5 billion. And, you know, hopefully, it'll be a little less than that, but we're somewhere going to be between 1.1 and 1.5. And, you know, our thinking at this point, there's a lot of, there's a lot of things up in the air, I'm hearing from a budgetary standpoint, that next year's budget may be even more difficult to get through than this year's budget. I don't know how it's possible, but that's what I'm hearing. We're hearing that some of the funding we received this year won't be coming to us next year, so that means we're going to have to reduce some of the state funding. There's just a lot of things that are up in the air right now that we're not getting a whole lot of great information coming from the state. Ms. Martin, is there anything you would like to add to that?
No, you did a pretty good job, except one thing is, is we would not, so if we run into trouble in a year or two or we're not doing construction projects, we can't just go out for a loan to, you know, help us with our operating expenses. That's discouraged, it's not something we can just easily do. The only time that we're typically permitted to go out and get a line of credit or anything like that to offset normal everyday expenses would be if the state's not giving us our funding. You know, like if they hadn't approved a budget in December, we can go out and get a line of credit just for that, you know, with the anticipation that once the state gives us funding, we will pay it back. But we can't go out and just get a loan to just, like, help us get through a year or two.
I guess I'll add one more thing, and that is the Capital Projects Fund that we've worked really hard to get some money in that. We didn't used to have that. That's being utilized, you've seen expenditures for that in the past. For instance, this year, the tennis courts are being done, and I know in a couple more years, we have to redo the track again and things like that. It's not, it's, it's nice not to have to put that into a budget, but to be able to pull out of this, the Capital Projects Fund, or if, I mean, I would hope a boiler doesn't go down at this point, because they're all new. But, yeah, I know, I know, I know, I know. But those are things in the past that, that potentially would happen, and we'd have to work that into a budget process rather than have that fund. And that was intentional, that was intentionally done by the board, and I think Ms. Martin's done a great job of getting money into that. But anyway, that's our rationale for it. And so we, we split it up three and three. If you have other questions, we're here to answer.
So is this, this is just authorizing municipal advisor and bond counsel to prepare the issuance of an RFP for a bank loan, right? We would still have to vote on that loan.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Yes, they, his team will go out, they will seek numerous banks. I asked them also to include as well, First Citizens Community Bank, where we work with frequently, Jonestown, and also Fulton, our local banks, but then they will also go out onto the market and try to attract other banks that they have used in other similar situations. Tell them, then, you know, we want $3 million, what would your interest rate be? And, you know, do a competitive process like that to get us the best interest rate and money available.
Right. So if, at that point, the board was, for whatever reason, dissatisfied with the loan that was presented, we could go out for another one, and we could make an additional transfer if we needed to from, from the fund balance, if we had to.
Right, yeah, this is not your approving your loan documents, this is approving Brad and his team to go out and to get us a potential loan at the most competitive rates that he can find.
Right, okay, all right. Other questions?
Quick question, can we get a loan if we need to, to fund the CTC's renovation?
So they are, so how that works is, they go together and that, what, the Joint Authority gets a bond, but they get the bond in all the school districts and the county's name, so we will be paying that back. So it's already a loan. I don't know that we will, like, go out and get a loan to pay back the loan is a viable
Could you remind us again what our current fund balance is?
Sure. Yeah, and I have that up right here. So our current total ending fund balance at the end of June 25 was $12 million. Now, remember, $535,000 of that is non-spendable, it's just on the books for the sale of Fredericksburg. And then you also have $990,000 in committed healthcare. Our Capital Projects Fund balance is $3.3 million. So in the unassigned fund balance is the $7.2 million. So everything else is assigned, and we would be transferring this $3 million out of the $7.2 million balance, taking that down to $4.2.
Does that include what we're getting from the state? Or is that assigned to?
The money from the state is, comes into our general fund, and it is used for operational expenses throughout the year. So if there's anything left over, we would be updating these ending fund balances in June, we do that every year, and that's, we reflect the ending fund balances as of June 30, which is the end of our fiscal year.
LeAnn, I have a question. Just about the, the fund balance that Bethel has on us that's holding, was it $3.3 million?
I thought it was 3.1, 3.3.
Something like that.
It's over $3 million.
How long have they been holding that money on the district?
We had to put that money into escrow before we started construction, so a portion of it was put in when we started the fieldhouse, another portion was put in when we did the elementary school, and then we put in additional funding in for the high school project. We've gotten approximately $800,000 of it back with the completion of some of the projects that we've done, and we're looking to get about $1.8 million of it back. I've been in that process for over a year now, just trying to work through that between our engineers and the township's engineers. It is not a fast-moving process.
I see that.
And it is, Fulton was kind enough to give us a semi-competitive interest rate, so it is growing while it's sitting there, and that money will be ours when it comes back.
Okay, that was my next follow-up question, yes. Okay. By any chance, do you know when we're going to get all of that $3.7 million? Are we just going to get slump sum each year or two year, you know, down the road?
In my opinion, we should have had the majority of it back already.
I agree 100%.
So I, I don't have an, I, I don't have an accurate timeline, because I would have never guessed that it would have taken this long as it has.
Neither have I. So, thank you, LeAnn.
Good question. So we anticipate this will be the last time we need to borrow. We should be able to get across the line.
Oh, for these projects, yes. I believe that this will be wrapping up the construction projects that we have going on, and I hope we're construction-free for a very long time, borrowing money for a very long time. Yes, I promised Gary that we weren't going to have to do an S&amp;P phone call again, so, you know, that at least gets us through another couple of years.
Is there any money, like, how's the contingency fund doing for the construction? Like, we're not going to be over? Like, we're not going to be over costs or anything? I know there's one large outstanding item, but besides that particular.
We're sitting on about three, a little over $300,000. But the brick wall that we talked about is going to be, Director Reese is going to talk about that soon, almost, doctor, sorry, doctor. About, I don't think it'll be quite half, but it's going to, 125-ish of it. And there's other projects out there. We anticipate not having much contingency left.
Okay, really good questions. Any other questions before we move to a vote? Okay, all right, so we're going to... Let's do it separately. So let's do the first item of 7.3. This is authorizing the administration to work with PFM Financial Advisors LLC as municipal advisor in Saxon and Stump as bond counsel and solicitor to proceed and prepare for the issuance of a general obligation note series of 2026 via a bank loan RFP to provide $3 million in funds for its capital program. So is there a motion to approve item 7.3 as stated? Thank you, Director England. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Director Moyer. Discussion. Okay, hearing no discussion. All those in favor of approving item 7.3, please indicate with an I or yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Okay, hearing none, my vote is also yes, so item 7.3 carries unanimously. And then we will move to item 7.4, and this is to approve the transfer of $3 million from the designated unassigned general fund balance to the Capital Projects Fund. Is there a motion to approve item 7.4?
Motion to approve 7.4.
Thank you, Director Kreiser. Is there a second?
Second.
Director Moyer? A second, any discussion?
A quick question. So if we decide, 7.3 is a look into a loan, if we decide we don't like the term of the loan, can we then later, for 7.4, will we vote again for more money?
Yes, it would just be a different item on a different agenda. Yep, yep. Okay, any other discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of approving item 7.4, please indicate with an I or yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Okay, hearing none. That motion also carries unanimously. Okay, Dr. Messinger, 7.5.
Okay, our Roth 403B plan. Ms. Martin?
So as I'm sure you're all aware, the pensions have drastically changed here for employees. And with that, we have, you know, employees that are doing 403s to save for retirement versus just a pension. And this is one of the things that we can offer to them. We had started doing more 403Bs for employees, and we had someone come to us and ask for a Roth 403B, and then we actually had another employee, another employee that wanted this option. So there's actually no cost to district to have this in there. Omni, who does it, runs all of our retirement things and tracks them for us, said that they can easily add this for us. And this is actually a way for employees to invest after-tax dollars into retirement savings for themselves. So I wanted to give our employees this option when they asked for it. Three of them did. No cost to district. I couldn't see a reason why not to allow them to continue with different avenues to save for retirement with not having a pension for everybody, full pension, sorry.
Okay, any questions? Okay, there are motions to approve item 7.5, the Roth 403B plan.
Motion to approve 7.5 Roth 403B.
Thank you. Director Blau, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Director Murray, thank you. Any discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of approving item 7.5, please indicate with an I or yes.
Yes.
Hi.
Any opposed? Hearing none, my vote's also yes. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. We'll go to facilities, change order, I think. Are we going to hear from?
No. Dr. Reese, too high.
We have tried very hard throughout this project not to have change orders that need to come to the board. In other words, save the money. And I have to be honest with you, my level of frustration about this particular one is very high. We have been going around, I think I first mentioned the possibility of the change order committee probably is three months ago now, and we have been looking at solutions after solution after solution, and somehow, everything we come up with keeps coming back to the original. So the issue is, if you turn into the high school parking lot right now, think about where the auxiliary gym used to be, you now see a painted wall. That painted wall used to be the interior wall of the auxiliary gym, and if you go back enough years ago, it used to be the exterior wall of the building. So a majority of that wall is a brick wall. And through the planning process for the renovation and the removal, I believe it was assumed, and I'm not pointing fingers, but I believe it was assumed that was still a brick wall, nobody realizing that it was painted, and this created a problem for us. They've tried, and we have been trying, not we, construction, has been trying different paint removal products to remove the paint, to expose the bricks, so we get back to a reasonably looking exterior. We have explored things like metal panels. We've explored things like fake, well, not fake, the real brick, there are split brick panels that are modular and you install. Then we find out that the wall's not strong enough to hold that type of weight, so you've got it, anyhow. All of this to say, we put an item on the agenda tonight. This is somewhat time-sensitive and somewhat not time-sensitive. And where the time sensitivity comes in is that if it ends up being a masonry project, which it all intends at this point lean that direction, we have to engage it while the contractor is still mobilized on site. Otherwise, we would pay another mobilization fee, which in turn is more expensive. So what we've put on the agenda tonight is an approval for $150,000. We anticipate it to be less than 150, but more than 120 that Gary mentioned. At least that's the number that I have in hand right now, somewhere around 135. But there's some issues with that pricing that we're trying to work on. That would allow us the opportunity to approve a change order not in excess of 150,000, or combination of change orders, not in excess of $150,000, to take care of that wall, whether it be a true new brick wall that goes up in front of the old one, remove the old one and put a new one up, although that has some demo fees, put a split or a half knee wall of brick with metal above it, whatever the most advantageous, advantageous from a price perspective and longevity perspective comes back to is what we're looking to do. So I apologize that it's this late in the project and we're bringing something like this to you. Believe me, I have shared my frustration to the team, and I'm sure you also are frustrated by this.
I'm not going to pretend I know anything about construction, but is it cosmetic or is it structural? It sounds to me like it's a cosmetic issue.
It's a combination of both, in the sense that what they've encountered is a lot of the block that was used in the original construction of the building was a lesser-grade block. So that has created some of the change order work that was approved outside of committee, it was low enough price. Like, if you think about the walls between the family and consumer science classroom and, would have been like the old family room area when you were here. Do you know where I am in what would now be the 40s hall?
Yeah.
There were walls in that space that because they used a lesser-grade brick, once they took away the ceiling around it, the wall swayed, and it didn't have strength to stand on its own, so that wall had to come down. Well, we're encountering that the block behind the current brick wall is of a similar nature, and they are concerned about the longevity of the wall being able to withstand. To be honest with you, our best-case scenario is we don't have to add any weight to it. The paint remover, there's one more that they're testing, comes back and works, and that ends up being like a $50,000 cost, plus we have to infill some of the brick. And what we're getting approved tonight, it isn't necessary for the full amount.
Yeah, I mean, it is kind of the face of the school when you pull in there, so like, but that's a really large ticket item for cosmetics as well, so just wanted to understand that. Thank you.
So we can't just put like a big Northern Lebanon mural up there and turn it over to the art department and let them have fun with it?
That's what I was thinking, too, like a big decal where the head of the Vikings in the vans and the women's Vikings, and they put down the home of the Vikings, right there with spotlights on.
There is a structural issue, though.
Somewhat.
Yeah.
And then there's places where, even if the best case works out, there's places that have been infilled with cinder block instead of brick, and so there's an aesthetic piece to that, that's more of an aesthetic issue. So many moving parts to try to get to a solution here.
I'll just say this. I think we wound up with a pretty nice product over there when it's all said and done. That wall will not be, it will be an eyesore if we don't do something to it. It's just not, it's, it would be a shame to have this building, the fieldhouse and all the other, the entrance to the new gym, even the vestibule to the old entrance, and then to have that wall. It is, if you have not looked at it carefully, it's about as ugly as it gets.
So a solution hasn't been settled on, but we think that, we think that the available solutions are going to be under 150,000.
In fairness, I have an estimate in hand for a solution that I think, as long as the paint removal doesn't work, is what we're going for, which is less than the 150 that's in front of you. However, there are issues with that pricing, and I don't know what we're going to get it down to. But I just had a brainstorm as you were talking. We do have some brick that we saved from this building, and maybe we can incorporate in that and save some money. I'll have to check into that.
And then add the decals on top of that.
Put the decals on, too.
So, sorry, any other questions? This is the recommendation of the change order committee?
No, in fairness, this did not go before the committee, because it's over $100,000.
Because it's over, right, understood.
And being over $100,000, it requires approval of the full board.
Okay, I'm just trying to get Director Fowler.
Yeah, honestly, I knew it was going to be close to that amount, and when we were talking with early numbers, we thought we were going to get it, and that's why the change order committee knew about it three months ago.
Okay, great. Okay, any other questions?
Is there any chance of us running out of the contingency money?
Like Gary mentioned earlier, we will be very close on contingency. We have 300 and change in there now, and most of that is spoken with this.
Yeah, this is coming out of the contingency.
But it's coming out of the contingency.
Right, but I'm like, as long as we have it, but if there's anything else, are we going to be in trouble? There's another issue.
So there's a balancing that happens in the end. So you have your contingency fund, and we also have unit allowances. Unit allowances are things that are built into the contract that say, okay, if we have to add another light switch in this room, that's $50. We include it, I don't know, 100 light switches. That's not contractually accurate, I'm just giving an example. And so there's, you know, 100 lights, how much did I say?
$50.
How much?
50, you said 50.
50, so $500, right? You know, so that we have that money sitting in the contract, $5,000, I knew. That money sitting in the contract that comes back to us if we don't use it. So even though we may be close on contingency, we still have this other value of money that's built into the project that we're not technically over, although I'd like to see some of that coming back to us.
So with roughly three months left to go until we're completely done, roughly, is there anything else that we can foresee on the horizon of a large nature that could creep in and require something big?
We have a list of items that we've been accumulating. The most expensive item on that list that I'm aware of currently has to do with the lavatories down by the room 112, the middle school tech ed classroom, bottom of the ramp, right there by Ag. They were thought to have been in better condition than what the condition of them actually was when they started to do the demo work. To bring that up to the same standard as the other lavatories throughout the building, that's somewhere in the nature of $20,000. That, at the moment, is the most expensive change order that I'm aware of, unless there's something that I'm forgetting that you're aware of, Leah, sitting there. But there's miscellaneous ones throughout that are there, but, I don't have a crystal ball, I'll say that as well.
But we don't see anything of this magnitude coming up?
Not of $100,000, no.
All right. All right. Okay, is there a motion to approve item 8.1?
Motion to approve 8.1.
Director Murray, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Director England. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of approving item 8.1, please indicate with an I or yes.
Hi.
Any opposed? Okay, hearing none. My vote is also yes, so that motion carries unanimously. Let's be cost-effective. Yeah, great, okay. Human resources.
How much is the fat head of my face? One of those up there on the wall?
Yeah, oh, the decal we're going to use, okay.
Human resources. We have Tamara Shauer, special education teacher. She is taking the place of a teacher that went over to the secondary building with the hiring of the instructional coach, finally have found a replacement for that. We also have a redesignation of Brenda Smith to paraprofessional specialist. That is actually one that was missed in August, and so it's retroactive to August. She had changed positions and was listed incorrectly as a paraprofessional, but she is now in a more high-need classroom, so we need to go back and fix that for her. Co-curricular advisors are listed there, Mr. Vannius and the Clash Royale Club. And then we also have our monthly substitute list. We have two things under coaches. One of them is a volunteer coach that's listed for you in that document under December, and the other one is a scorekeeper for the girls' basketball team, and that is the HR list.
Okay, any questions on those items, items 9.1 through 9.5? Okay, hearing none. Is there a motion to approve items 9.1 through 9.5?
Motion to approve 9.1 through 9.5.
Thank you, Director Murray. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Director Moyer, thank you. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none. Is there, all those in favor of approving items 9.1 through 9.5, please indicate with an I or yes.
Hi.
Any opposed? Okay, hearing none. My vote is also yes, so that motion also carries unanimously. All right, instructional approvals.
Yeah, we have two. One is our translator services that we do on an annual basis. The other one is a policy that actually we were able to look at and redo that has to do with right-to-no requests. And we get sometimes these really mass right-to-no requests that take a lot of time and go out to school districts everywhere and are anonymous. And we now have the ability to say, no, we're not going to do that. And so PSBA had a draft ready, we looked at it as a committee and approved the changes that they had. I think there was one box we wanted to check on it, which we did. But it gives us the ability to not spend a lot of time tracking down things that aren't really very important when we get some of those requests that are anonymous, and I think that's a nice change for us.
Okay, so just a point of clarity, that was items 10.1 and 11.1.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
It's okay. But the only item that I noticed on that policy, Dr. Messinger, is that we would need to check that block, because right now, as the draft online does not indicate that.
Yes, that, make a note of that, that the box will be checked. Would you read that in statements, just so they know?
Right, so the item that we were talking about, that Dr. Messinger just pointed out is on page two of seven of the proposed policy. It says, "The board authorizes the district to deny anonymous requests for records. A request may be considered anonymous if the requister has submitted insufficient information for the district to identify if the requister is a legal resident of the United States." So that's the item that is new, that provides us that opportunity. And then there's a few others that if you just look at the policy, there's some other things involved, face it, that are just some changes. But that is the main material modification to the policy. Okay, any questions on 10.1 or 11.1? And we will, we'll do a vote on 10.1, and then we'll do a separate vote on 11.1. But any questions? Okay, is there a motion to approve item 10.1?
Motion to approve 10.1.
Thank you, Director Murray. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Director Blau. Any discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of approving item 10.1, please indicate with an "aye" or "yes."
Yes, aye.
Any opposed? Okay, hearing none. My vote's a yes. Motion carries unanimously. And then same, is there a motion to approve item 11.1? Thank you, Director England. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Director Kreiser. Any discussion?
Only discussion that I would state is, I mean, we could have used this about 10 years ago. But I'm very thankful for it, and glad we don't need it right now, and glad we'll have it in the future when we need it, so.
Well said. Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of approving 11.1, please indicate with an "aye" or "yes."
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. My vote is also yes, so that motion carries unanimously. Thank you. That ends the items for board action for this evening. The next item is the reports. We'll go to CTC report. I believe I read, Director Klein, were you and Director Moore both there? Was it just?
No, Dr. Klein was absent. I was, I filled in for him. Two things. One is congratulations to Zachary Hishman for the Rotary Student of the Month for CTC. He's a senior, so hopefully his accomplishments is the auto body technology. So hopefully, in the future, he can work on my cars.
Great.
But congratulations on that. Second is, they are going to shortly choose which phase of which planning buildings, selections, for the new renovation of the CTC. And they also, I believe in January, they're gonna start, get together as to the cost of each of the school districts within the Lebanon County. So that's all I have. And one other thing, those students can make some really good pumpkin pies, so. And pumpkin pie, so, thank you.
Great. Okay, good report. Thank you. Legislative liaison, Director Kreiser.
Of course, the big news is that we got the state budget, as that happened during our last meeting. It does include some cyber charter funding reforms, so it'll be interesting to see how that impacts us. Some of it does require the cyber charter schools to prove where students live, to make sure that public schools are paying for the students that are not enrolled in their districts, though. You know, hopefully, that will be something that's helpful for us.
Right.
And then on the federal level, the Department of Education is transferring some of their programs out to other federal agencies as it shrinks in size or possibly goes away. So some of that has started actually happening now.
Great, thank you. And that cyber charter reform doesn't include a cap, does it?
No.
Not this one? Great. I mean, not great. Okay. Thank you. Good report. Appreciate it. PSBA liaison, Director Blau.
I don't have anything.
Okay, thank you. And then IU 13, Director Murray?
Just sound like a broken record, probably, but just that they continue to need staffing, so they can increase programs over there, so.
Great, thank you. Good report. And change order committee? Okay, great, thank you. Great, thanks. Okay, informational, anything?
Just the annual budget calendar. Ms. Martin attached that for everyone. And then I talked about some of those concerts. All those dates are listed there for you. Like I said, feel free to try to get out the one or two of those if you can.
Okay, great. Thank you. With that, then, if there is no new business, just like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays. It's been a pleasure this year, and I'm looking forward to another year with, with this excellent board. So with that, is there a motion to adjourn this evening's meeting?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Director Murray. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Director Blau. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of adjourning, please indicate with an "aye" or "yes."
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, hearing none. Vote's also yes. This meeting is adjourned.
Happy holidays, all.
Thank you, Brooke. Merry Christmas.